...two thousand eighteen voting meeting.
So move.
Mrs. Rhodes, second by Mr. Beistall. Roll call. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Accounts, general fund check summary.
The board will be asked to consider the approval of the December two thousand eighteen general fund check summary.
Motion?
I have a, can you ask question?
Discussion, yes.
Jim, on the check summary, Belfour USA Group fifty-five thousand for disaster repairs?
Yes, sir.
What is that?
That was at the mold situation we had at the high school and the smaller incident at the Ruppstall building. That's the company that did the mold remediation and their invoices have been submitted to our insurance company for reimbursement. We have a ten thousand dollar deductible. We filed a little over an eighty-five thousand dollar claim for all those costs. So I had Mr. DeFurio the other day, he's checking on, following up on the finalization of our account. That's the company who did the mold remediation.
Is that the high school, you said?
Both, high school, they did it at the high school and there was a smaller amount at Ruppstall.
We're at the high school.
Band room.
Band and course.
Band and course rooms.
Okay. And S four T, is that the new contracted service for calling subs?
Source for teachers, yes. That's what that is? That's a company where we send our substitute teachers through.
Is that working well, Vince?
Yes. Yeah, we actually had our mid-re, mid-year review this week and we're, we're in the mid-nineties as far as like low, low to mid-nineties as far as the availability of our subs. So they're, they're doing a good job of staffing.
Great. And one other, I just want to point out, the million fifty-one thousand dollar quarterly payment to Peasers?
Yes.
I'd just like to let folks know that in my last year here in eleven twelve, that payment was three hundred thousand. So I just want to bring that up because that's going to be a hot topic for the budget. Thanks.
Yes, actually going into our new budget, Peasers has pretty much leveled off. The increase in Peasers is a little under two and a half percent in the rate, so after some, after some absorbent.
Thirty-two percent? Is it at?
It's going to be thirty-four point something percent up from.
The point of the highest, thirty-four.
Thirty-four.
Because I remember that, you know, it was just starting when I left and it was a bell curve and, and it was supposed to peak at thirty-two. So I saw in the seventeen audit was around thirty, so it's up to thirty-four. How long will it stay at thirty-four?
I'd have to look at the Peasers forecast on, on the Peasers website.
Is it on the webpage?
What's that?
Is it on their website?
Yes, it is.
I'll get it there.
Yes, yes, they, they have a, they have a projection sheet, I could, I could print that out. Yeah, my first year, starting back in eighty-nine, it was fifteen point eight nine when I started up at Ligonier.
Well, I started off, it was at fourteen and it came down ever since. Well, we'll get into that when we get to.
Well, you remember during the nineties, it kept going down, down.
To one percent.
Eighty-nine ninety was the peak year and then it kept going down until the, around two thousand four, three or four era, it nearly hit zero, it was like one percent.
One percent.
Then it's been doing this ever since, so. And we knew back then that everybody was taking the savings because you had to. But we knew that, you know, what goes down is going to bounce back up and boy, did it.
Well, that's just something I want all the board members to realize that in six years, your payment went from three hundred thousand a quarter to over a million bucks. Thank you.
I have a question too, Ian. Since Bill brought up the Belfour work, is, is that work completed?
I do believe that today they were in putting the carpet installation of the carpet in both rooms.
That's a different contractor doing the carpeting.
So the, the band room's done?
We're, we're open.
Okay.
It's been a long arduous process, yeah.
Was there a, was there water leaking?
Yes, there was.
That's a flat roof above there, right?
That, that's actually, correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, that's actually how we were able to paying the, the insurance company to assist on that because according to what we were told, mold remediation is not covered. Am I right under?
Unless it's caused by some flowing water.
Water event.
Right, right.
So we were, we were fortunate, so to speak, in that.
Like the football turf.
Yes, we had a big water event that day.
Any more discussion?
We have a link.
Oh, yeah. Can we have a motion for the check summary?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Polakowski, second. Mr. Frye. Roll call, please.
Mr. Beistall. Mr. Carson.
Yes.
Mr. Frye.
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski.
Yes.
Mr. Porter.
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mrs. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Love.
Yes.
Motion carries eight, one opposite.
Treasurer's report.
The board is asked to consider the approval of the December two thousand eighteen treasurer report.
Question again?
Discussion?
I don't want to be a pain, but I'm trying to get up the snuff.
That's okay.
Hey, Jim, on the treasurer's report, there's a list of all the bank accounts. Are there any bank reconciliations, like with PNC?
Yes.
Okay. You don't show it on the treasurer's report?
No, no, we, we adopted a, a summarized format that shows all the accounts. It meets generally accepted governmental accounting standards, segregating the monies between government funds and trusted agency funds, less voluminous, less paper, less trees to kill. So yes, all the accounts do get reconciled.
Well, you do have a bank reconciliation in the office each month, I take it?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Everything goes through PNC and Plaguey. Is that, is that right?
Yes, PNC is our current main depository, but we are transitioning to the Scottsdale Bank and Trust, what they call themselves, a division of Mid Penn Bank. All the student activity accounts for the building, they have their new checks and deposit tickets and I think they got their endorsement stamps and now they're, they're getting their depository bags that they could use when they, you know, have fundraisers and things like that. So they'll, they'll be the first ones to, to get converted over and then we'll start clicking off some of these other accounts. The big ones, I'm holding back because you know how complicated it can be, especially with payroll and direct deposit and.
Well, I remember some time ago that you guys were considering it, so you are following through with it.
Well, that was the orders I was given until, you know, the orders would be rescinded. That's.
Well, it's not only complicated, it's a little expensive. But beside the point, when will this all transpire then?
Hard to say. I know the folks down at the bank are, are working to make the conversion and to get the, the supplies in place, so.
So it wasn't a problem with PNC Bank?
Absolutely not, no. PNC's a major institution.
Okay, thank you.
No, no trouble at all with them.
Any other discussion? Can I have a motion? Mrs. Rhodes, Mr. Carson, sec, second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries eight, one opposite.
General Fund Board Operating Summary Report.
The board will be asked to consider the approval of December two thousand eighteen general fund board operating summary report.
Discussion? No discussion? Motion? Mr. Beistall, second.
Second.
Mr. Porter? Roll call, please.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith? Mr. Beistall? Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries eight, one opposite.
Board reports. WIU presentation.
It is my pleasure this evening to introduce Dr. Jason Conaway. Dr. Conaway is the executive director of the Westmoreland County Intermediate Unit, so I'm going to turn things over to Jason. Thank you for joining us tonight, Dr. Conaway.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Mashia. Good evening, everyone, Happy New Year. I've been here a number of times before, giving information about the intermediate unit and tonight I want to give you an update on two major initiatives that are going on countywide. And before we get into that, for those who need a quick refresher of intermediate units or those who are new to the board or were previously on the board, if, everyone should have a folder, so if you want to open up your folder, and you'll see on the right-hand side, you'll see on the back, there's a pamphlet that kind of gives you an overview of intermediate units and the association of intermediate units. And remember, intermediate units serve as an intermediary between the Department of Education, as well as then the seventeen school districts. And we are a service, an educational service agency that is a, a state entity. Also, on the right-hand side, I just provide an overview of Westmoreland Intermediate Unit and more of the specifics associated with that. And for your reading pleasure, I've also included an organization chart, so you can see truly the depth in which we provide services on a number of different areas, from curriculum, financial services, student services, executive services, as well as technology and infrastructure services. So again, not reviewing that tonight, just want you to know that it's there as a resource for you if you want to take a look at it. The two things that I do want to talk about in gr, in greater detail this evening is about a new committee on legislative action, as well as a program called Step Up Westmoreland. So we're going to stay on the right-hand side and you'll see on the right-hand side, there's a document there entitled Westmoreland County Committee on Legislative Action. And as intermediate units, we are constantly looking for ways in which to assist districts to do what they need to do for the sake of educating students. And one of those areas that the intermediate units help is with legislative advocacy. And instead of having seventeen districts going to their individual elected officials, we're much stronger as a single voice of public educators in the county and we speak with one voice to all county legislative, elected legis, elected legislators. So we had much discussion at the superintendent level and we decided that we wanted to pursue it. Dr. Christine Oldham from Ligonier Valley is serving as the co-chair with me on the committee. And if you look at your handout, you'll see that really the goals are listed there in, in terms of being more informed, involved with the issues, increase awareness and educate the community on how it impacts Westmoreland County, and that's the key. There's so much going on out there, we need our legislators to know how it impacts us here in Westmoreland County. You'll see that the membership of the committee consists of each superintendent, each business manager, as well as one school board member from each district, as well as an alt, an alternate, as well as the CTC directors and the cabinet level positions at the intermediate unit. And the very bottom right, you'll see the advocacy activities that we will embark on as a committee, from setting priorities and priorities of action, which will be our first two meetings, to really get organized, what are the important issues impacting us in Westmoreland County? Also, developing document issue documents that can be shared with the community, coordinated letter writing campaigns, organizing social media messaging, organizing days on the Hill to lobby our legislators on issues that impact Westmoreland County, as well as organizing legislative reception events. So it's my hope that this board and its administration will participate on the committee because we're much stronger together than, than individually addressing those different issues. So that's what we'll call Westmoreland County COLA, Committee on Legislative Action. So that's the first thing that I wanted to share with you. The second item I wanted to share is on the left-hand side, and this is a countywide initiative known as Step Up Westmoreland. And Step Up Westmoreland stands for Students, Therapists, Educators, and Parents United in Prevention. The reason for the creation of this initiative is, within this country, we know that we have a, a major mental health crisis in that there's a gap between those who have mental health items to address and the resources and the availability of those resources and the knowledge of those resources. So over the summertime, the, the county behavioral, behavioral health members, different members of different districts in the county, and the intermediate unit came together to discuss this very issue. And in light of many of the school violence, mental health plays a central part in addressing that issue. And we were actually going to apply for a federal grant and we realized that we could do so much more on our own and not be tied to federal guidelines and rules that we had to follow. So we decided to create our own called Step Up Westmoreland. And it creates a network of mental health resources for those four audiences that I mentioned earlier. It's a place for people to get information, it's a place that we can refer people that need information and to get help. And the network is all culminated in a website, and that website's listed down below on your folder, called stepupwestmoreland.org. And this is where it will house the resources for people needing to refer or needing mental health services. Within the network and in the website, there's going to be connects to crisis help, resources and services, toolboxes for the different audiences that we've mentioned. We have an Ask an Expert where we're going to be having a series of interviews of experts that will become, then become part of a library of information. Also, we're going to have things that are just for students. We officially kicked off the initiative about a month ago, the county commissioners were there, in fact, the county then passed a resolution, a proclamation in great support of Step Up Westmoreland. And all of this has been done, not spending a single dime of any taxpayer money. It has all been the in-kind efforts of those three organizations working together. As we expand the network and the possibilities, we may want to begin looking for grants to continue expanding. And one of the ways in which Southmoreland can help support it is for the board to consider a resolution. So on the left-hand side, you'll see there's an at-a-glance, as well as a more in-depth executive summary of the initiative. And then also you'll see that there's a resolution that really calls out the Step Up Westmoreland and this board's support for Step Up Westmoreland. And it's our hope that if all seventeen districts pass this resolution, we would then be able then to apply for those major grants and really expand our efforts within the county. We've set it up that other counties could replicate exactly what we're doing here in Westmoreland County. When I shared this with my fellow colleagues across the state, they are chomping at the bit to see how well we're doing and how could they replicate what we're doing in Westmoreland County, because it truly is unique in the Commonwealth. So that's the second initiative I wanted to review. I did promise that I would only talk for ten minutes, and so I'll conclude my comments there, but would be more than happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Is there a danger of the grants, if they're only one year, not being duplicated in following years?
I'm sorry, could you repeat? I couldn't hear that.
You had mentioned trying to expand by getting grants. If you get a grant, is it for just one year or would it be for a series of years?
Yeah, I think it really depends on the grant. Obviously, we would want to get as many years as possible in any type of grant funding, but it really depends on the grant. We never, ever, ever want the initiative to be dependent on grants, because we've already started it without any money and we can sustain it, but if we want to continue to expand it, expand the educational opportunities for those four different audiences, we would look for one year or more years, depends on the grant.
Is that why you're excluding federal grant, because it's almost against the stream?
Many times, yes. Now, that doesn't mean in the future we wouldn't consider looking at a federal grant, but this, when we, in the summertime, and we were reading through it, we, everyone felt our hands were tied by the reg, the regs that went with it. So that's why we said, we can do this on our own and we could probably do it better without it. Now, going forward with enhancements, of course, we would consider federal funding as well.
I would like to give kudos to Dr. Conaway and his staff because I, I do believe right now they are cutting edge as far as the implementation of this program. You know, with all the heightened sensitivity toward security in, in the schools, mental health related issues are directly linked to that and I think this is a, a key component and a great step in, in trying to address and assist the schools in, in, in that effort also. So once again, Dr. Conaway, thank, thank you and your staff for really working, stepping up and helping out.
Well, you're absolutely welcome. Thank you for the comments, appreciate that. One in five kids are dealing with mental health issues and many develop that by the age of eighteen and the rest by the age of twenty-one. So it is a true, true issue that we as schools need to address and I think we're doing a great job of doing that in Westmoreland County.
And I would like to validate, we are starting to see more and more issues starting to surface within our schools, so it is becoming a predominant issue that we have to address.
Thank you very much, it was a pleasure speaking with you this evening.
Thank you. Student reports.
Let us know that Mike here, Dylan, is supporting the girls' basketball team tonight as a member of the pep band. All of our board members should have received an invitation from our music department for our annual Trium Music Honor Society induction ceremony. The invitation reads, "You are cordially invited to attend the Southmoreland High School Trium Music Honor Society induction ceremony and reception on Tuesday, February twelfth, two thousand nineteen. The ceremony will begin promptly at six PM at Southmoreland High School. Ceremonies will be followed by a recital and reception. We are pleased to announce the induction of Brianna Demical, Sarah DeBrul, Jasmine Frost, Madison Garlowich, and Abigail Whitlatch. Our returning members are Quay Akins, Morgan Brown, Dakota Kaufman, Ayla Greenowalt, and Dylan and I are returning members as well. Onto the notes, please see the attached invitation for the fifty-fifth annual commencement ceremony at the senior high school for the Board of Education. Also attached is the form to complete for participating in commencement, please complete and return to the high school office. Learning support collected gently used goodies to stop the Santa shop. The Santa shop is open to all SHS students to shop for gifts. Learning support students organize the shop and then provide customer service to their shoppers, they also wrap all the gifts for them. This event is part of the special education students transition requirements and also provides free gifts to those in need. We cannot do this without the support of the SHS administration and staff, a huge thank you to all. The Alpha students competed in a chess tournament on Wednesday, December twelfth, at Yawk High School. Two students made it to the semifinal round. As a holiday treat, the special education department hosted a spaghetti dinner on Friday, December fourteenth, for all special education students. Another successful holiday dance was held on Sa- Sa- Saturday, excuse me, December fifteenth. The high school cafeteria was filled with eighty of our students decked out in their finest Christmas attire. The students danced the night away to the awesome music provided by DJ McCauley Jones. The students also enjoyed delicious Christmas cookies, vegetable and cheese trays, snacks, and a holiday punch. It was a very festive and fun evening that was enjoyed by all. The dance was chaperoned by Mr. Krafcek, Mrs. Sutton, Mrs. Kelly, Ms. Fisher, Mrs. Hickson, Ms. Farrell, and Mr. Bundridge. High school students collected over eight hundred pounds of food for the Westmoreland Food Bank this holiday season, with the freshman class collecting the most at two eighty-nine and a half pounds. The food drive was sponsored by the National Honor Society. Senior National Honor Society members attended the Penguins game on December twentieth versus the Minnesota Wild as part of the Penguins, We Are the Future program that provided two free tickets to each member.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent report.
I just have several items. I am very proud to announce that Mr. Dan Clara was the recipient of the Duquesne University's Dr. James E. Henderson Prize for Excellence in their Educational Leadership Program. Mr. Clara is a doctoral candidate in that program. Mr. Clara was also chosen as the recipient of the Mind, Heart, and Spirit of Educational Leadership Award. Dan was selected for this award by his peers in that same program, so I'd like to congratulate Dan on that. I am also pleased to announce that our district has received a thirty-five thousand dollar grant from the PA Department of Education for the PA Smart targeted K-12 Computer Science and STEM Education Program. So that, that was just released actually around lunchtime today, so I know there are several teachers that worked on that grant and I wanted to thank them for doing so. I was honored to be the invited guest today to the two thousand nineteen PA Superintendent of the Year Award recognizing Dr. Gennaro Priano, Superintendent of Franklin Regional School District. I had the pleasure of listening to both the Honorable Pedro Rivera, PA Secretary of Education, and Governor Tom Wolf voice their support for public education in our state. So they both made strong statements about supporting publication, or public education in our state, so it was very interesting to listen to their comments. Results of the recent water test will be posted on the district webpage and results of the recent random tests, radar tests will be posted on the district webpage. Both of those were favorable, there were some recommendations with the water and Mr. Ms. Wall is just adding a few things to spruce that up, but I will have everything listed on our district webpage for public consumption. That is, that is all.
Thank you. Business manager report.
I have no further reports other than those submitted tonight.
Solicitor report.
As a housekeeping matter, we forgot to mention when we came back, or came into our open session, that the board engaged in another information fact gathering process concerning a labor issue, also held an executive session concerning personnel issues and one concerning real estate purchase of a small piece of ground. Attached to the public content is a copy of the order in the non-protonk appeal by Saratage in which Judge Marsoli granted them the right to continue or go forward with their appeal, even though it was one day late, even though I objected. Whether or not we can continue to maintain that for an appellate issue, we'll talk about on another day, but that would have to be at the end of the case. The, I've included farther down a resolution and notice for your meeting next week at which you will be considering the process of engaging in the proposed preliminary budget with all options available to you, including exceeding the Act One index and seeking a public referendum or exceeding it only for the purpose of seeking a special exception, the most likely being special education, or not doing any of those and doing an opt-out resolution. That, of course, will be overwhelmingly dependent upon the information that you get from the business manager and your own input. However, you will have to make your decision next week, otherwise it starts to mess up the timetable that we laid out in December.
David, you mentioned special education at the second, how about retirement, Jim?
That was also discussed, the special education was the larger money, it was a hundred and forty thousand, I don't recall perfectly what the. I don't recall perfectly what the, I know it was less. And Jim did a calculation, but I don't remember what it was.
I did.
Is that because of the small percentage increase from the year before?
Yes. Yes, I, I have the folder down the hallway. I can go get it if you need to see it.
No, no. We'll probably give it next week.
I will.
Yeah.
I will. I got two, two more inputs to make into the expenditure part of the budget. The one input I'm waiting for is estimations from the administration on textbook adoptions, and those can be rather pricey, as we all know, and then I got some new account codes I'm setting up redistributing how I record the insurance opt-out money that employees make, so that's a minor thing. But the textbook adoption will be the last final significant piece to the expenditure budget, then tomorrow I can, I can start running my totals and then I have to back into the, the property tax component. So, we're very close to...
So, you don't think there's going to be an exception for retirement?
Yes, I do.
Oh, you do? Okay, sorry.
It may not be significant, but I believe it's there. And again, it was a, an unofficial worksheet that PDE supplies for districts to use. I checked today, they have opened up the referendum exception system, so, because everybody's now working on, not everybody, there are districts like ourselves working on their Act One preliminary proposed budget. Is that the new legal term?
Yes.
And of course, there are others that are going to be passing this month, the traditional opt-out resolutions, opt-out of exceeding the Act One index, so, but they needed to open up that system, so I provided Mr. Potonic a copy of the new referendum exception system. Yeah, it's limited now from where it was when they, when they, they passed the exceptions. Now you're limited to just special education and that's a rather complicated formula. I'll be glad to share it with everyone next week. Retirement, of course, and then there's one for...
Debt service?
Grandfather debt, and I don't think we would qualify for that.
No, no.
I really don't, so...
I never went through an Act One, okay? Has the district been through an Act One since I've been here now?
This is first.
This is our first go-around.
All right.
I went through it twice up at Ligonier Valley, but that's, that was for the, that was in the winter of 2011. That was for the 1112 budget and then a year later for the 1213 budget. There were more exceptions back then. There were eight, and they did utilize some of the exception money, not all of it, but some of it. It is, it is an onerous process to go through, as David can attest, as we've really, really looked at this over the past, what, six months or so, meeting on it, studying it.
Since September.
Since September.
That concludes my report.
WIU report? You haven't reported anything. CWCTC report?
I have no report.
PSBA Liaison Report?
I'm sorry. I'm going to be a pain just for right now. On Central plus Moreland Tech, I noticed our share for pro-tech in, off the audit report in '18 was only like 300,000, less than 300,000, about 280, something like that. Is it that low or is our participation that low?
It is.
And I also noticed in the audit that the local revenue dropped by about $900,000, so that means every district student population is dropping at the pro-tech.
The...
Is that, in other words, does that count or is that across all eight districts that have it down? Be off that much?
The Career Center is going through a study right now to evaluate their programs, the validity of some of them, possibly looking at introducing new, and I think that has influenced participation in, to be totally honest with you, their student interest might be waning a little bit also, but I think, I'm actually was asked to be on the committee to evaluate CWCTC programs, and they're looking now to introduce programs that are more pertinent towards the skills that would be needed today for industry and labor, so I think you're going to see some major changes occurring hopefully in the very near future with the programming and enrollment at the Career Center.
I was, oh, I'm sorry.
There are some programs that have low numbers, but there are some that, so I think they're, they're in the process of revamping, looking at how they can meet current needs for our students.
Yeah, it just struck me, the cost being under 300,000. Back when I was here, it was around 440, 450,000. We had that many kids participating, so it just...
Our participation has been in the range of 43, 45. I talked to Mary Ann this morning, she said, yeah, 52 bodies there now, so that equates to 52 full ABMs or whatever. I'm not sure, but ironically, tomorrow morning at 11 o'clock, they're going to be presenting their budget to superintendents and business managers. I mean, you're, you're welcome to meet me at the building and we can, we can run over together if you want to attend it.
No, I don't really need to attend. I mean, you drop the cost from 440.
You're right, you're right. It has gone down. Whether you see that as a good thing or a bad thing, I don't know.
Well, I was budgeting for 80 kids and that's what we were sending back around 2011, '12.
You're right, you're right.
Okay.
We have a large number of colleges and classrooms too that are really attractive for a lot of our students because they, they can leave our high school with, you know, a fair number of college credits that are greatly reduced price, so that, that also is playing into...
So, kids are taken advantage of.
Yes, yes.
Is that through the community college?
It's through several different colleges.
Oh, great. Penn State, I think, right?
I apologize, I would have to get the list.
Okay, no, that's fine, that's fine.
PSBA Liaison Report?
Beginning of the year, you know, Governor just got, Lieutenant Governor just got sworn in, so there's nothing really too much to report on right now, so... Well, with the beginning of the year, we haven't scheduled anything yet, but I think as long as some of us are basically healthy again and can actually think, we would like to, I will get with Mr. Mashin, we'll try to maybe set up something in the next couple weeks, weather permitting.
School Safety Committee report?
Now, just to revisit what we talked about last week, we're looking at, trying to come down a date for the fundraiser. It's looking like April 13. Just go check other, the committee's meeting next week, one day. We haven't been pointed a date for that yet either, for the safety committee to meet. And the main goal, main focus is going to be metal detectors at the high school level and you get going. So, yeah, the cost for protection, I'm looking, hoping for April 13 for if we have those. Generate whatever we can generate to help offset the cost of that. I think it's needed, I think, so I'll have more at the next meeting, if we need to.
When is April 13?
Easter weekend.
It's a Saturday. You know, you should probably do it after, maybe the next Saturday.
But we're, we're...
Miss the IRS weekend.
Do these write-offs, it's a good donation.
That's true. Those write-offs only count for 2019. They won't count for during your 2018 tax return.
Throw it out there.
I just throw that out there. Well, you know, you put in those forms whatever you want.
All right, well, I'll have more report next week.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. That is, that's Palm Sunday weekend, not Easter weekend.
Yeah, okay.
If I might just tag along with something with Mr. Carson.
Or it'd be a bad weekend, too.
We had that $25,000 PCCD grant that we were awarded and we are working with the...
Next weekend is Easter weekend.
PTA, we're looking at implementing a standardized follow-up system. We're going through the process of garnering all the bids, since it is over the allotted 2,8600, so we're in the process now of trying to centralize. We currently have two separate follow-up systems, which we really don't have accountability on a high degree. We want to standardize that and up that, so we're working on that, so that has been probably something that will be involving the safety commit, committee also.
One more thing, I saw something here, I think. How did the first couple days with the new system go with the...
Safe to Say?
Safe to Say.
Safe to Say.
We, just for everyone's information, on Monday, the staff were, information concerning the Safe to Say was disseminated to the staff. Safe to Say, for those that might not be aware, it is now a state-mandated anonymous tip, a hotline that is set up by the state through the Attorney General's Office. Students reporting anything would go to that office and then that office would filter things down either to the 911 county stations or to the schools directly if it's, depending on the severity of the incident. We rolled that out on Tuesday to our middle school students and I do believe today, Kaylee, that it was rolled out to the high school students, so hopefully it's a process that it's just an added layer of how we can ensure the safety and welfare of our students.
As regards the school safety...
This is a new program since I've been here. Does anyone know the cost for, say, personnel? What the, what that cost is?
Okay, what?
Well, I know Greg, I know Greg is here. Are there other officers?
We do have two part-time armed security guards and we also have, I do believe, two, three, three full-time, I want to say, security guards that are stationed in our schools.
Mr. Mashin, if I can interrupt you, but Greg, is he on a grant?
Yes. Yeah, Greg.
That expires.
I do believe this is last year on the grant.
Was it 20,000 or 50,000?
It was multiple-year grant, so this might be the last year, this is the last year of that grant. It was a three-year grant.
20,000 here?
Yes.
So, that covers...
That covers his salary.
Okay, and the others are coming out of local sources?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and you probably don't have...
And plus the protection, they have assisted greatly. I do believe, but there was over almost $40,000, $2,000 that was written. So, we were very fortunate to get the community and the PTA and Mr. Carson's staff to help us. A lot of the expenses that are being incurred for our security updates are being covered through them.
Right, and that's great. We will get a preliminary budget next week, right?
Is there any way the cost of the program is segregated?
Yes. It has its own function, 2660.
Okay, thanks. I think Greg, is it something we...
It was a one-time deal.
That was by the state, right?
Yes, it was a state grant.
Now, we're continually looking for other funding sources, but we're, we're still waiting word on the second part of that PCD, PCCB, green part B, but that was, that was American, we're so worried, so we have not been notified.
Before we talk to Mr. Cooper about it, can we get all of our bids in or what are we going to do to get that follow-up system modified?
That's, we're currently working on that right now. Yeah, and we're trying to expedite that because I do understand, you know, your needs also.
That's all I have to report right now.
Okay, thank you. Old business, Roughstow Elementary?
Tony, is there anything you want to add?
No, I just covered it up.
New business, 2019, 2020 school calendar?
The board has asked to approve the 2019, 2020 school calendar.
Get it though.
Can I have a motion? Mr. Vice is the second?
Discussion.
Discussion.
I didn't look at it.
We need a second first.
Yeah, we need a second first.
Second.
Mr. Carson, seconds.
Discussion, Mr. Carson.
I just gave Mr. Carson my paper copy.
Do we, I don't know, this was before my time, but if we fill the Kennywood Day and if we do, why, it's not during the school day, you know?
No, we've moved Kennywood out from the school year. It's held over the summer.
Why is that?
Kennywood was the only one benefiting from that, in my opinion.
That was a nice premium school.
I think there was, I think part of the reason was there were testing, state testing that placed in May. I'm not sure if that's true or not. That's why I seem to recall.
We were testing in April, but now the state has pushed that back, so we're, we're actually testing later in the years and that was going to be conflict.
I think, I'm sure that by doing it out of the school, the numbers got to be down, I would think, because kids probably are more available to go during a school day than, than they're, I don't know, I just thought, I just thought of bringing up.
You know, it could be a day to add to this calendar. I'm not sure what day it is in June. Is it the second Thursday in June? Is that what it is? Around June 13?
We were, I was not really that keenly aware of it, but the last time that I was aware, we did not really have great participation in students participating in it, so I would defer not to put it on our school calendar and put it within the confines of our school year. This is my opinion.
Anyone else have anything to add to that? Six, one half dozen together. I mean, I, I just think there would be more involvement for the people that can't get there during the school day and parents don't got to be there. Okay. Does that work well, Ben's starting in the last week of August?
It does.
Is that the problem?
When I was here, it was always the Westmoreland Fair. Students participate. Still is?
Yes, sir. We try to be sensitive because we do have a large number of kids participate in that and it would not be fair for them, you know, not to be able to fully participate in that.
Okay. Is the fair over by the 26th this year?
Usually it's the last week, so...
It's usually the last, like their fair's over Saturday, they're coming to school Monday or Tuesday, whenever the, yeah, that's...
I guess we could look it up on the internet, huh? Be what, 2019?
Wait, not, the least public transportation to Kennywood whenever it runs home.
No.
But until it was during the school year, we did, right?
Like I said, I was not keenly aware, but I, I'm, it might have been a regional bus. I have to date...
16 through the 24th.
Lack of information on that because I, like I said, I believe that, this is just my opinion, the only ones that really benefited off of that, Kennywood was, we were taking school time away for that.
We used to, we used to provide buses for Kennywood. Students would pay so much, we'd go through grooms for its quest now, and we paid like two-thirds of the cost. It cost us like a bucket child. I mean, the student paid like two-thirds of the cost, whatever it was, Quest was requesting and we would end up paying a buck for each child. It used to be at one time, six buses and it got down as low as two, two buses.
Don't get to do much during the summertime, you know?
Actually, Mr. Carson, we just got an email with Kennywood for the 2018-19 season. They're starting to evaluate changes, so they're not, they're really not moving toward not being supporting the program, so...
Put that nice calendar together. You want that back, too?
You can have this year's, you can get one next year. Are you ready about?
It'd be safer for kids to go to Idiwall Park rather than Kennywood in West Smith.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries, eight, one opposite. CWCTC audit report.
The board has asked to consider the approval of the June 30th, 2018 Central Westmoreland Career and Technology Center audited financial statements.
Motion?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Polakowski, second?
Second.
Mr. Porter, discussion? No discussion, roll call, please. Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes, yes. Mrs. Smith, yes. Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries, eight, one opposite. Voting meeting, January 24th, 2019.
Notice is hereby given, the Southmoreland School Board will meet on January 24th, 2019, at 7:00 PM local prevailing time, in the cafeteria of the Southmoreland Middle School, 200 Scotty Way, Scottsdale, Pennsylvania, to develop, consider, vote preliminarily approved proposed preliminary budget for the 2019-2020 fiscal year general fund, including Act One referendum exception notices, and possible real estate tax mileage increase greater than the index, and requiring public referendum, and approve the public display thereof, and further notice for the meeting to the adoption of the preliminary budget at a later date, all pursuant to special session, Act One, Act of June 27th, 2006, PL 1873, Number One, as amended by Act of June 30th, 2011, PL 148, Number 25, Section One, at section, Act One, or approve a resolution to opt out of the preliminary budget process requirements, and a special voting meeting for general purposes for such business as may come before the board.
There's a resolution that goes with that.
Do we have to read the resolution?
I can if you want me to.
Do we want to read the resolution?
I'm getting there.
Be covered from...
Be it resolved that the Southmoreland School Board approves, authorizes, and directs the advertisement one time in the district's designated newspaper, and by handbills in the administrative office in school buildings, and to those media outlets, and by mail, email, or facsimile transmission to those having requested notification for a proposed preliminary budget meeting, and a special meeting for such business as may come before the board for June 24th, 2019, at 7:00 PM, in the form as attached hereto, and incorporated by reference by the board secretary and the treasurer's authorized and directed to pay therefore.
Any discussion on that?
Yeah, Jim, what's the index take us to?
For the new year, 3.1%.
Okay.
That's down from 3.4 that it was for this current year.
So, we're, so at 3.1 on, what is it, 77 mils, 78 mils?
Something like that.
That's not much of an increase.
The, I don't think anyone could, could, could say that the index was generous at any time. He knows well as I do that, you know, that index was poorly formulated by the legislature back in 2006, as I, as I showed in the past. You know, it's based on your real estate tax collections, and a district like ours, you know, we're, we're upside down. 60-some percent of our revenue comes from the state. We, we're less dependent on property tax dollars. That index should have been based on your total expenditure budget, not on what you bring in in property taxes, so. The rich districts, they benefit from that index, you know, when they're 90% local taxes and 10% from the state, so...
Yeah, I agree.
But that's, that's preaching to the choir.
I was hoping we'd at least get three, up to three mils, but, man, this is going to produce less than two and a half mils. That's crazy.
Any further discussion?
Agreed.
Roll call? Mrs. Rhodes, yes.
We didn't.
Mrs. Rhodes is making the motion, second? Mr. Polakowski? Mrs. Rhodes, yes. Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries, eight, one opposite. Personnel, the 2019 musical staff, we are going to table. We are going to move to intermittent FMLA.
The board has asked to consider the approval of an intermittent FMLA through the remainder of the 2018-2019 school year for Amanda Springer, autistic aide for the elementary school.
Motion? Mr. Carson, second? Mr. Frye? Roll call, please. Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries, eight, one opposite. Intermittent FMLA?
The board has asked to consider the approval of an intermittent FMLA for the remainder of the 2018-2019 school year for Kathy Thompson, high school guidance counselor.
Motion? Mrs. Rhodes, second? Roll call? Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries, eight, one opposite. FMLA?
The board has asked to consider the approval of an FMLA for Cindy Gallagher with no breaks in service from approximately February 24th, 2019, to approximately April 24th, 2019.
Motion? Mr. Frye, second? Mrs. Smith? Roll call, please. Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries, eight, one opposite. Intermittent FMLA?
The board has asked to consider the approval of an intermittent FMLA for Chris Leonard, administrative and middle school secretary with no break in service to be utilized throughout the remainder of the 2018-2019 school year.
Motion? Mr. Beistel, second?
Second.
Mr. Porter? Roll call, please. Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries, eight, one opposite. Citizens' comments?
Good evening, Jan Kiefer, Homestead Avenue. I'd like to talk about the step-up presentation that I saw tonight, and, but before that, I'd like to welcome Bill Porter to the board. Had I known he was running, I certainly wouldn't have put my name in the, in the till, but I think it's not only a great decision by you guys, but I think it's a great, almost a historic asset to have someone come out of retirement with expertise and walk onto the board when we need him the most. I used to kid Bill over the years that he needs to get out of the house and use his, use his skills, because those people, right as they retire, are really a great asset to the community, and I just thought that was a wonderful evening for me to walk away a loser. But, thank you, yeah, I, okay, so on, on the step-up program, I've seen a little bit about that over, over the, in the news cycle, and I would just like to make a few random points here. With our rush to school security that's coming on here, the window is going to open wide for the people who get pulled into these programs as, as having behavioral problems, especially the boys. The boys are always the large percentage of, of the people that are giving, quote, behavioral problems, and... And what's going to happen here is, this is going to be pretty much a pharmaceutical-led treatment approach. I know there's going to be lots of talk of other, other ways of dealing with this issue, but what it's going to boil down to is a higher number of percentages of our children being put on pharmaceutical drugs. There's a large pharmaceutical lobby that's going to push here, you know, they're seeing the dollar signs coming on here, and it's almost foreseeing that the percentage of students up on, on behavior drugs is going to go up. I'm not going to go into the, the science behind that, but it's, it's not science necessarily, it's, it's a industry science, and there's opposing opinions on drugging children at all. But, and there's, and, you know, and the reason these kids are getting stir-crazy, or whatever you want to call it, you know, I just threw down a couple here, you know, they're getting increased screen time, which is unnatural, there's electromagnetic fields they're sitting in, and I think every parent should know if their child is sitting by a transmitter, how many hours they're sitting by it. Lots of schools in America and around the world, they have no EMF fields in, in the schools. You know, the kids are coming in, they're allergic to foods, we know that there's a percentage of these kids that are on drugs, that are simply dairy allergic, or their sugars are just out of whack. Those things can be fixed, and they're not going to be fixed by putting them on a lifetime of drugs. You go on these drugs that you guys are going to jump on board here with, those side, those drugs stay with these kids the rest of their lives, the side effects hit them, and we don't know what 40 years of kids on drugs is going to produce, but we can project that it's not very good. A lot of these kids are coming in with just basic, cheap nutritional deficiencies. A simple alternative approach to this would, would take a lot of these kids from a, a death sentence on drugs to putting them into normal, and then just, just generally speaking, it's unnatural for kids, especially boys, especially me, to be taken off, out of your home, sat down for 12 years in a school, in an unnatural environment, no fresh air, no stimulation. That's just a little bit barbaric. Two more points, and there's a downside to this police craze, you know, like, we're not getting reports, but like, we know these kids are being on camera 24/7 when, or, you know, constantly when they come in here, now we got a tip program. There's a downside to this. I think we've gone way overboard on a couple shootings, just because it's sensationalized in the news, and, and that's going to have, have an effect on these kids down the road, too, once we get to measured. So, just to conclude, then, when you're at your table with your Westmoreland County people, I know pretty much who's going to be at that table, and there's not going to be a voice in there that's going to speak against the pharmaceutical industry, there's not going to be a voice in there that speaks against the food industry and all these alternative holistic approaches to a child's health that's doing it. And I think that's about the end of my presentation. I just, again, I just want to repeat that whoever's at the table is going to determine what happens to these children, we're going to be picking out the ones we've already picked out, and until we, again, widen the gene pool, those who are in, who are in public participation, we're going to have a predictable outcome of the pharmaceutical industry doing what they've always done. Thanks.
One more thing? I heard about last week about the Tunisian foods and drinks.
Yeah, could we, I would like to have Mr. Krafcheck have a conversation with, and get input from him also concerning that, and he was not available tonight, so... Is it possible that I can invite him to our security meeting and then...
I was just asking, Lee Mizwalt, we...
I just said that.
We've gone through this, back when I was here, and the gist of it was, the maintenance supervisor, and I'm not speaking for Lee, because Lee come on the year, my last year. The gist of it was, taking food in, the custodial staff would not, the present custodial staff would not have enough time to go in there and clean, and an even bigger problem was food getting into the gears in the bleachers and screwing up the gearing. So, I'm just reiterating what we went through 12 years ago, and why we never did it.
So, I would, that is a great idea, and I do know that a major concern is also the spillage of fluids in the bleachers and the problems that they occur, so, so I would invite Mr. Krafcheck and Mr. Mizwalt to add some input to that.
One more thing, was, is it possible for the exit of the high school? With the ponds are having to pull up? That's for Township.
That's Township Road, but the problem, the reason why that problem was occurring was that drain was blocked, and I do believe they have now cleared it, so we need to get within our property, we could hatch wits on our property, but we're going to, I know that Lee's been working with the Township to try to get them to...
I want to see if they'll build a quest for them to tire.
Yeah, there's also a pretty nice hole on the way in, too.
I'll deny their payment.
He's still in it?
I think we're still in the comment period of, of the agenda here.
Yeah, sure.
Still in the comment period?
Are we still in the comment?
It says comment, and then it says agenda, and we can bring up subjects that I love to comment on.
Well, I guess you can comment about what he just said. I think you can, because now we had a new discussion. Yeah.
Okay. I just like, I made this point numerous times, if you're going to have, follow the agenda, follow the agenda, like, there's no, when people comment, then bring up, you know, start the meeting up, you know, finish your meeting and ask for public comment, but I appreciate you letting me speak on that, so now I have to, at least I will. I think the whole idea of carrying garbage food into the cafeteria obviously needs to be examined at, at that core. I don't, I don't want to see any soda and popcorn that's treated with the chemicals in the school. I mean, it sends a whole bad, whole bad message. It's, you know, we should be way beyond that at this point. Thank you.
I just have one quick question. I know we touched upon this earlier, but I'm just wondering if there's any more of an update on our abandoned chorus rooms and the carpeting, as we are still not in them, and I, as a student, I have no idea what's going on.
I will be there tomorrow morning, because I, I, too, believe that the abandoned chorus needs to be back into the rooms where they can do what they need to do and have the board instruction there. I will be there first thing in the morning.
Okay, thank you.
I, I understand the concerns of the students and Mrs. Gore and Mrs. Amberini, and I will be checking, following up on that. You have a right to be back where you belong.
Got it? Motion to adjourn. Second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? See y'all next week. At 6:30 for...